Okay, this meeting now called to order. First on the agenda, we've got public carings. And first on the list is proposed road name change. Lee County Court of Superior will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 21st, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the General District Courtroom of Lee County Courthouse located in Jonesville, Virginia. The purpose of the public hearing is to take public comment on proposed road name change. Peter Winston is requesting that from the trail be changed to Skipper Chuff Trail. Mr. Winston is the only property owner served by this road. Anybody here on that behalf? Okay, hearing done, we'll move on. Would you, anybody want to take action on that?
I like the motion, do we allow the change?
Got a motion to allow, got a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have proposed road name change. Lee County Court of Superior will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 21st, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the General District Courtroom of Lee County Courthouse located in Jonesville, Virginia. The purpose of the public hearing is to take public comment on proposed road name change. Alfred Miller is requesting that Farlow Newman Trail be changed to Tranquill Valley Lane. Mr. Miller is the only property owner served by this road. Anybody here on that behalf? Okay, hearing done, we'll move on. Take any action on that?
Your district said.
I recently represented Mr. Miller's Ohio State.
I make a motion if we approve the name change.
Okay, got a motion, got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ohio State.
Okay, next on the agenda, we got Kyle, excuse me, I apologize for pronouncing this wrong, Kyle Camerun. Special use permit request. The Lee County Court of Superior will hold a public hearing on June 21st, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the General District Courtroom of the Lee County Courthouse located in Jonesville, Virginia. Virginia to solicit input on a special use permit request. Kyle Camerun has applied for a special use permit to allow an automobile salvage yard and/or automobile graveyard in an A1 agricultural district. Property consists of approximately 24 and a half acres of land, type of parcel number 80-A-52, and is located at 494 Mount Fogmore Trail, Ewing, Virginia. We have anybody here on that behalf? Well, don't all rush it once. But now, listen. When you come up, please state your name, your address, and we'll allow you three minutes to voice your concern. It doesn't matter whoever wants to go.
Jimmy Cutt.
What's your name again, I'm sorry?
Jimmy Cutt.
Jimmy Cutt, okay, my turn. Okay.
And it's just a private road up through there. We all live on it up through there. And it's just a little gravel road with people. And the road comes through the middle of my yard. And the road is like 10 foot from the, my front porch. My grandkids lives beside it, and they play outside all the time, you know, back before across the road, riding the bicycle. And I don't think it's the right place for the junkyard. Plus, you're gonna have all that traffic in and out, you know. You're gonna have glass holes in roads and everything else. And, you know, you get all that over leakage from vehicles, old transmission fluid, antifreeze. I just don't think it's the right place. It's all public road, and we all live up through there, and we just don't want to deal with it.
How many, you may have said, how many houses did you say is on that road?
Seven.
Eight.
Eight or three.
Well, several is how I think.
Well, let's see, two, three, four, five, probably about 10, 11 houses.
Yeah, about 10, 11 houses.
They double worked.
And it's a private road.
Okay.
Oh.
And so I don't think it's the good place. He's done been buying stuff, and I don't know if he's got the rights to buy it now or not, but he's been buying stuff, taking it in there. And I've been seeing some doll feet, trash bags, whatever Kyle coming in, and we don't need that anymore. So, I'll let somebody else do it.
My name's Paul Donnelly. I live at 1222 Dooley Hollow Road. I agree with everything Jimmy said. Five of the houses that live in there, we get all out of work from a spring, which is right below that property where they want to put the salvage yard. And all that stuff would leach down into our spring that we drank, it bathed, and used out of the spring. And like Jimmy said, it's a private road. Actually, I think you could actually almost term it as a lane. It's not used, it's not big enough to use for hauling vehicles in and out of there. And like I said, it's bad enough that right now, they are using it to buy and sell scrap. And these unsavory people are coming up in there that we don't want to have a part of. We're not against anybody having a business. As a matter of fact, I think it's a good thing somebody has a business, but this is residential, and nobody needs to have a business up there. And that's all I got.
Good thing.
Victoria Cutt, 271 Dooley Hollow Road. I have two small kids that play right there all the time, and he's all the time got people running in and out of there. I've asked him multiple times to do something about them flying in and out of there. He locks his gates where they can't even get to him, so me and my children have to deal with that. We all have well water down there, so all that stuff is gonna be seeping into our well that my kids have to drink and bathe from.
It's at the bottom of the hill.
And we live at the bottom of the hill, so I mean, we have to deal with them. I mean, they have to come right by my house, right where my kids play. He doesn't have to deal with that. I mean, he has a sign saying that he's closed, and he keeps his gate when he can't go up on his hill. So, when they came in, they come in there, and if he's not home, we have to deal with them. And they run all over the road, they go in their yard all the time, because they'll come through there and they'll be hollering whatever they're hollering. I guess they want to get their next fix. And they've already ran over her flowers, and my kids play in that yard. I don't want anybody else up there. I don't like the fact that he's buying this stuff already, because it brings all these people in there, and they make, it's awful. I mean, I don't like what he's doing right now, and I think he needs to take it somewhere else. I mean, he doesn't have to deal with it, because he's far enough up on that hill that he doesn't have to deal with none of the traffic, none of the people coming in there. I mean, awful what he's doing. And my kids don't need to be part of that.
So, I'm guessing, based on what you're saying, he lives at the very end of the road?
No, he lives, my in-laws live there, Jimmy and Charlotte, and then we live on the hill. He lives over in front of us, way up on top of Fog Mountain. If you go down, I go up, up his hill, and he's up there. He put a gate at the bottom of the hill to stop anybody from being able to access.
The gate's right in front of our house.
But we still have to deal with everybody coming in there, whether they're coming in there to deal with him or not, and then they have to turn in our driveway where my kids play at. And I don't want anybody like that around my kids. I mean, not if you live on a private, dead-end road that nobody has any business access unless they live there. I mean, we don't want this business up there. Because I have no problem with him owning a business if he wants to take his business elsewhere away from my kids. That's all I have, thank you.
Hi, Sandra Hurst, 788 Dooley Hollow Road, Ewing, Virginia. I'm one of the five homes that have the spring and the well right below the property. And salvage yards, I am, you know, familiar with, have stopped in them and seen them, and they're very environmental, environmentally unfriendly to, you know, residential areas, A1 agriculture. There are, you know, cows and stuff below, people living below there, that I do not believe that any of the, the water that would be running down would be beneficial to any of us to, you know, to have, have that back closed, not to mention the waste on the property. So, that's what I have.
Good thing.
Yes, I'm Dixon Cutt, 271 Dooley Hollow Road. And one day, I was outside working on my truck, and there's a car coming through there, and they had, it looked like they had trash bags on top of trash bags that's piled inside the car, outside the car, and they had axles just like laid onto the back of it, holding all that stuff on them. And it was just, I mean, it was just a mess. And you could just, it's just the wrong kind of people up in there. People shouldn't, people really shouldn't be, you know, up in there. And we have horses up there and stuff, and we have another piece of property up above there. And a lot of times, they don't go up this hill, they keep on going back in there. And I'm just afraid that the wrong people will get up there, you know, and steal. And we have a well, it may be 15 foot from his property. And, and all it, when it rains, everything just drains right down, so we're afraid it's gonna get into our well, all that. That's all I have, so.
Anything? Okay, hearing, nobody else speaking, well, what?
Mr. Chairman, I need to state for the record, did receive a phone call earlier today from a property owner in that area, who, again, he's one that water, the spring water serves his house. He was concerned about that, and also traffic and possible litter from trucks bringing things in, and he was opposed to it as well.
Can I even add one other thing on that? Talk about that scrap, scrapyard stuff, do they have to have a permit for that?
The, apparently, he's within his rights on, he's legal, as far as I'm in, with what he has been doing. I've read the minutes of the planning commission meeting, that he, he had started moving into scrap metal, basically according to what he'd told them, trying to move items out as quickly as it can be. And was dealing with batteries, listed several different types of batteries, cell phones, computers, and power tools, that he has buyers for products like that, so for scrap products like that. So, Mr. Johnson's not here today, he's out of town, but I assume, based on the fact that they're only asking for this for the, for proposed use, that he's legal in what he's doing already.
Scrapyard.
Am I correct that there's no public water up there?
No, there is no public water.
If this were an industrial zone, he could do it, right?
Yes.
And we've got industrial zones down that way constitutionally, rather than where?
Yes. There was a, I noticed during the minutes of our meeting, Mr. Camerun had indicated that he prefers move this business out closer to the highway somewhere, but he didn't have property at this time.
What, what, has he got, I know Jimmy's back there. Jimmy, what does he do up on that property now? Does he farm it? Does he got any cabbage or any, what is he?
No, it's just been woods that's been logged out, and then he's been cleaning up up there. You know, I guess getting ready to put his junk cars and stuff.
It's like a knob that just goes up?
Yeah, I know where he's planted, but it's real small. But there's been several vehicles go in, not just like cell phones and battery stuff that you probably wouldn't even see, if somebody had the vehicle.
He's had a Jeep up there, several of his cars.
Vehicles actually pulling up there, you know, junk cars already.
Also got a message from Mr. Johnson today, again, who's shouting that Mr. Camerun would not be able to be here tonight. I think his wife's about delivering a load. Thanks on his.
He cut off his hill before we came up there, he was home.
I, I'm just repeating what the staff person said to me earlier today.
But how they're hauling that stuff is definitely not safe and stuff, just with them axles laid on the car. They had like the trunk open and the axles, and all that, all that stuff just literally goes on their road, and we drive over it, then we got tires. You know, tires is expensive.
Everybody lives in this hollow, we take care of that road ourselves. We all pitch in, we grade it, we do what we gotta do to that road.
Gravel, just whatever needs to be done, we take care of the road. I mean, we shouldn't have to take care of the road.
There's total, there could be no access to get no big trucks in there. I mean, there's not.
At points, they're probably, if that road at the mouth of it, it's probably like 10 foot wide.
If you meet another car, you have, someone's gotta hear, someone's gotta move off to the side.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion on this.
Yeah, there's no other, let me, let me finish up here, since there's nobody, nobody else here on behalf, one way or the other, we'll, we'll move on, so, yeah.
I'll make the motion to deny this request for the junkyard.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I think you're gonna lose half your audience. I said, I think you'll lose half your audience.
It's always just very exciting.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Appreciate y'all.
I'm going to the door now, Papa.
Let's noise that down a little bit, and we'll carry on. Okay, we'll move right along. Next, we got the Lee County Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Lee County Court of Superior will hold a public hearing on June 21st, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the General District Courtroom of the Lee County Courthouse located in Jonesville, Virginia, to solicit input on the proposed amendment to the Transportation Section of the Lee County Comprehensive Plan. The proposed amendment is as follows. Addition of four projects to the Transportation Section as listed below. Remove traffic signal at the intersection of Highway 58A, West Morgan Avenue, excuse me, and Route T-721, North Combs Road and the Town of Pennington Gap, and replace with a roundabout. Add a left turn lane on Highway 58A, West Morgan Avenue, from 220 feet from West Gate Mall Circuit to Route T-1101 Cecil Street and the Town of Pennington Gap. Install offset left lane, turn lanes at the intersection of Highway 58, Veterans Memorial Highway, and Trade Center Lane, Plum Drive. Realign the northbound approach of Route 879, Pioneer Road, where it intersects with Route 58, that's Thomas Walker Road. Close the western entrance to Thomas Walker High School parking lot, all of Route 879, and relocate it approximately 100 feet further south. So, anybody here on behalf of any of those?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just make a quick statement. These, the purpose of this amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, now, if we submit projects through VDOT's Smart Scale Program, that project is supposed to be in the county's comprehensive plan. So, this is added, though, we've had other projects that we've added in the past. All these projects have been submitted as a pre-application at this point. The full application is due until August 1st.
I notice that the roundabout and the turn lane are broken apart now. We voted on them together, tell them that we wanted them to be apart, so.
They're, they're a combined project. This, this is how Richard and Dick did it, and here they have, it's a liability split. But they're not two separate projects.
What have they said about making it two separate projects?
I don't know if you heard Mr. Maddox comment the other night after maybe, when he was here for the secondary six-year plan year, that this was discussed, I think you brought it up, and we were discussing the possibilities of how it might score without it. And he is, he said it sort of under his breath, but I heard he say it, he said, "It won't, it won't go where it's split." I don't think they would look at the turn lane without the roundabout. I can't say that would be a then, but we can propose it too, and see.
I think if we have to get the turn lane to get the roundabout, it would not have the turn lane at all. That's my position.
What are you talking about?
The roundabout at the hospital. If we have to take the turn lane from the hospital to Golden Foal, basically, to get, we have to get the roundabout, too.
Well, it basically told us now what dangers they have, you'll be warned about to take both of them.
They, the project came as a combined project out of the study that VOD did. Now, they didn't offer it as, you know, two different options or two different projects. They combined it as a single project to relieve congestion all through that area, as far as, not necessarily congestion, but eliminate the prospects for accidents on turns, left turns on out in that corridor. And then, like I said, I've said before, I was a little surprised when I saw the roundabout approach, but as they began to describe, I began to understand where they were coming from. And again, their, their concerns more on the roundabout is that they're trying to slow traffic as it comes into West Pennington, into that business district. Now, if they get caught with the red light, that slows them down. If they don't, they're moving on through. And by the engineering firm that did the study, they commented that they did see a lot of fast-moving traffic coming across the bridge and entering that area at a pretty high rate of speed.
Radar fixes it.
Amen.
VOD, VOD doesn't run rates on.
So, we have anybody here on, on behalf of them?
Me. I ain't done this before, so I.
Same rules apply, just name, address, three minutes.
My name is Mark, Mark Tollman. I live at 354 Clayton Myers Road, Pennington Gap, Virginia.
Okay.
You put a roundabout in anywhere on the semi-truck, my son is the driver, I'm just making. You take the semi-truck, try to go right around the roundabout, and you don't beat it. The trucks are not 40-foot and daycabs, they're 53-foot and sleeper trucks that they live in. You put it around about, within 30 days, it gets on a national map, and you outride a truck. So, if you outride a truck on a major thoroughfare, take the corner down here at Lee Farmers made a turn lane, and get him to go out, because trucks ain't allowed to come through. Now, if we don't like trucks, that's fine, going through Penn. But do we produce what we need here in this county? No, sir, we don't. We get it trucked in. We don't do the VOD off of boats, or trains, or bikes. Everything is trucked in, we need something for somewhere in the county. Truckers are hard enough to get things done now with a company. So, for my son to come through, Big Stone's got a roundabout on the secondary route, not a primary. Now, you can't come into Big Stone because they've knocked these things out for the parks, and you can't make the right turn, you can't make this, and you can't take, everybody's sitting right here at the courthouse, tractor trucker comes up, he need to go this way. He has to back up, take the other lane, which is dangerous, too. To make the right-hand turn, he can go through Penn. Okay? If it's a speed thing, VOD doesn't control speeds, radar does. Slow them down, put a traffic light before the bridge, slow them down, make it intermittent, or you slow down, then you slow down again. But you put a roundabout, 30 days, it outrides a truck. And then we, as Lee County, and Spohex pay for it, because you need something that, that the grocery store on the other side, they're gonna outrun him, back to DOT, back over and back there. It gets on a national map in 30 days. It's all over, I've looked at it. After my son to go that way, go to Wise, what up, get out here, pick up loads coming in, he can come down country boy hill, make the left-hand turn, come down this way, but you can't go that way and make a right-hand turn. He has to either go through, go through Food City's parking lot, or turn a left, go down there toward, where, like you going to Appalachian? Basically, turn, come back this way, because he can't go through. And if he goes through that and up there, he just knocks through, comes down. I mean, it gets the most, he's putting the guns back down. Because that only knocks down three of them every time he goes through. He can't help it. It ain't big enough. If we're trying to slow, who gets the most traffic than anything else? It ain't these truckers and everything else that's coming around here. That's us, Lee County, and it's a get, you know, we don't realize how fast we're going, we need something else to slow them down. Hey, speed bump will do the same thing versus taking all of that land, put people's speed bumps, put another traffic light, intermittent, the traffic lights one way to it. But we're, I don't, government's spending money, or we spending money. But I'm simply saying, you put this in here, you're gonna knock the trucking out, but do we need the trucking? We need the food, the bread, this, that, new, the clothes we wear, everything from Walmart, anything else. We don't produce nothing in here's county to survive us all. We get it from other counties that produce it. They need it from us. We've got the, the first thing that went after FPU, there in driving, with lazy boy is it now? They gonna do it. Where they gonna go? They gonna turn, go to DOT, DOT, it's around here to Jones want to go out, because they can't go through. We just made out a route for all this, and it's just, it's a waste of money. A speed bump does the same thing, it's not another traffic light, just leave sign. Because if my son, on the trucking industry, you get paid from zip code to zip code. If you have to go outride, it's on your dollar. Then it's extra money that he has to add, too, because he just went out and around to bring it back in to Food City. If he's on this group, companies that deliver to Food City or Bennett's or Port Russel on this side, he has to go here, go to DOT, in the back lane, and come back up, go back there. You see what I'm saying? A roundabout to slow things down, if we have a lot of accidents right there that we can't control it, we have more accidents at Walmart intersection than we had here from the hospitals. It's the speed. It's the speed. It's like, oh, there's something to slow them down for speed versus a million-dollar roundabout. It's gonna, it's, we're gonna pay for it longer, but if you ask the people up Big Stone, they hate, that slows them down. But then again, the traffic that goes through crosses more of an accident. I can't take a 20-foot Houston A-7 through the roundabout. I beat 753 of them, he just, he knocks them over, he can't help it. But he ain't gonna show us. What we gonna think of, before we get our stuff out? We better be thinking, before we get our stuff out, because if we knock our stuff out, how we gonna get?
Okay. Appreciate it. Okay, hearing, well, well.
Chair, entertain a motion on that?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we accept the last two items. Install the offset lanes at the intersection of Highway 58 and Trade Center slash Plum Drive and realign the northbound approach of Route 879 and Pioneer Road where it intersects with Route 58 Business, Dr. Thomas Walker Road. Close the western entrance of Thomas Walker High School parking lot off of Route 879 and relocate it approximately 100 feet further south.
Okay, you got a motion to accept the last two items. Got a second?
Second.
Had a second. Okay, motion has second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I make a motion that we accept the full comprehensive plan amendment as presented.
Okay, we got a motion to...
Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear the votes on that motion. I thought I heard three ayes. If that, if that passed...
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Then, it's already, unless you make a second motion for the first two projects, you could do that.
That's what I'm doing.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, but...
Well, I didn't present it that way, because that's what I'm doing.
Was it unanimous, saying on the ayes on the previous one?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so you've got a motion to also accept the first two items.
Yes.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
You've got a motion, uh, had a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yep. So, we got three more ayes.
Maybe I'm understanding, we voted to accept the last two, and the first two, so we're accepting the whole thing anyway. Am I missing something?
Well, we might be, state, putting these in the comprehensive plan, if the board wants to discuss the final applications that are submitted. We have only submitted pre-applications. We do not have to submit final application on any of the projects that we've submitted. But if they are submitted, they have to be in a comprehensive plan. Or they score better if they're in a comprehensive plan. I'm not sure VDOT would accept them otherwise. But the board will have to adopt the resolution at some point to approve the projects that are to be submitted. So, if you want to discuss it further beyond this, there's still negotiation or discussion or whatever you want to call it, at that point, is which projects we actually submit as a final project. But those have to be submitted by August the first.
I just don't understand what there is to talk about if we... My understanding before was that we unanimously did not want the roundabout. So, what's the point in submitting the roundabout to discuss later?
I'm not sure I follow you on what you're saying, that you all agreed unanimously not to do the project.
Previous meeting, we said that we did not want the roundabout, but we would, we would submit it with the other one, with the turn lane, with instructions that we didn't really want the roundabout, we wanted the turn lane only. And if now they're saying that they won't break those two apart, then what, what's changed in the last 45 days?
When we discussed was the roundabout at Walmart.
No, no, we, they're just doing a realignment of the turn lanes at Walmart.
I hope, but they had a roundabout.
No, not at Walmart. Sure, yeah, just, just...
They want to get rid of the right entrance.
They talked about doing the right turn only, coming out of that plum drive, uh, towards that's traffic, that's a, that's a private drive, and it would have had to have gone towards Benner, they would not have been able to make a left turn coming back towards Jungle. But that one was not approved.
I'm not a big fan of roundabouts, but if you can't get the turn lane without the roundabout, then I'll go with the roundabout. Because that's, that, that's a bad two there, I'm telling you.
I agree with that. And I'll, I'll follow up. They may, they may let us split it into two projects, uh, as pre-applying as a combined. I don't know if they'll split it now or not. But I can inquire and see. And we may end Thursday night and end next Thursday night, so I should be able to have an answer about that. One, let's see.
So, basically, it, it is still all in the comprehensive plan?
With both of these motions.
Until we discuss it, yeah. Okay, well...
Well, let me clear the voting, because you never did call for no's on that last motion. So, I got unanimous on the first one. I've got three ayes on the second motion, but...
I think it was four ayes on both of them.
Okay.
I thought you was unanimous on the first.
The first one was unanimous.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, there were four people voting, yes, on both of them.
What did the fifth person do? That's what he's saying, he's saying all five.
I didn't hear the three votes. I heard Mr. Smith, Mr. Moseley, and Mr. Smith. I did not hear...
Yeah, I, I said, yeah.
Okay, and you did not call for no's, so...
Okay, I thought, I apologize, I thought I did, okay. So, any opposed?
Are we on the second motion, opposed?
Okay. I just have to record the votes, and I don't want to record them wrong.
Yeah, I might not have been loud enough on that. I apologize for that. Okay, we got that squared away now? Okay, departmental reports, everybody had a chance to look over the reports, got any questions, concerns? And constitutional officers, treasurer's report? Okay, hearing, no questions or concerns, we'll move on to public expression. Uh, anybody here for public expression?
Good evening. My name is Joanne Harding. I'm a resident of 1065 Cedar Hill Church Road in Jonesville. I'm here as a, thank, first of all, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here as a concerned citizen, also as a representative of PALS of Southwest Virginia, a local rescue, basic, pretty much based in Wise County, but I have reached out to Lee County for the past two, two and a half years. I have been working with Lee County Animal Shelter to network the dogs that come into the shelter to local rescues, or not local rescues, actually, rescues in Northern Virginia to get those animals out and into facilities where they can be spayed, neutered, and adopted into homes. We've been very successful at that. One of the things that is concerning me with all of this hot weather that's going on is the, the shelter does not have any kind of cooling system in the kennels, in the kennel area for the animals. And, you know, as a public shelter, as a humane thing, you know, the animals should be cared for while they're in the county's care. And to me, that means not let them have a heat stroke or whatever while they're in the county's care. I was able to get some fans, volunteers offered, have donated fans. We got fans up there today and into the kennel areas, and they're running those fans. But, you know, the fans just aren't gonna be good enough in this weather that we're having this week, and we have, already had some hot weather, and, you know, we're only into it today, the first day of summer. So, I'm asking if, you know, we can get some, I have had people offer to purchase air conditioning units for the windows, if we would be allowed to do that at our expense, not, we're not asking the county for money for any of this, just asking us to, to be a part of the community and doing the right thing for the animals. And we may at some point come and ask for money, because there does need to be a permanent solution, you know, some sort of a central unit installed, we feel like, to, in, in the kennel area. And, you know, hopefully, we could get that evaluated and possibly even rep, do some fundraisers or whatever to, to offset some of that expense. But certainly, you know, I wanted to make you aware, because I, I know a lot of people aren't, you know, an animal shelter is not on everybody's radar, you know, but it's, it's just the right thing to do to take care of the animals that's there. And just, just to give you a little bit of background, just what animals do go through that shelter, of course, you know, they do not take in cats, which is a whole other issue because, you know, that is a real problem for the county, is cats and the duckers and everything. But for the, the county and rescues, as PALS of Southwest Virginia, we do the very same reporting to the state that the camp, that the county shelter does. And so, in 2020, the Lee County Animal Shelter took in 506 dogs. All those dogs, there were 234 strays that were picked up, 253 owner surrenders, 15 that were seized. And what happens in seizures, from my experience from talking to animal control officers, the person could get a fine or could, something more serious, a charge be brought against that person, and they elect to surrender the dog instead of going to court. So, there was 15 seized, seizures, and four bite cases. And the disposition of those, those 506 animals, 78 of the owner surrenders were reclaimed, 97 were adopted, 305 were transferred out. So, those were the ones that went to other rescues out of the area, 305. One died while under the care of the shelter, and we've seen that happen, one come in sick, and they come in when one weren't in, instead. You know, 27 were euthanized. And, you know, that's not a large number, 27, you know, and that's thanks, I'm not taking the credit by any means, but it's, it's a concerted effort of getting these animals moved out here. So, 27 were euthanized. In 2021, there was 171 strays, 382 owner surrenders. So, we went from 234 strays to 171 strays, 253 owner surrenders, to 382. All the shelters in the area are telling us, we're seeing more owner surrenders than strays coming into the shelters. And a part of that is the economics. You know, people are saying, "We can't care for the animals." Part of it is puppy seed, when puppy season comes, everybody surrend, I sent out, at one point, there was one litter of 13 puppies, you know, and we're seeing puppies, huge litters of puppies, so part of that. There was 14 seized and high bite cases, 79 of owner surrenders were reclaimed, so that was 79 out of 382, 62 were adopted, 421 were transferred out, and 12 were euthanized. And I see everyone of those animals that are coming in, you know, our, and the ones that have used, have been euthanized, I will have, you know, the animal control officers, I can't say enough about them. I'm not here to bash the animal control officers or the shelter. Those guys, they work hard. I know they get, they don't get the justice, they don't get the gratitude they deserve, but I see what they do. And I see, and you should be proud of how clean that shelter is. That shelter is, they keep it clean, they take care of those animals, but they don't have control of not having air conditioning in that shelter. They don't have control of that, you all do, you know? So, I'm just asking for your support to allow us to do this, and let's talk about how we can make a permanent solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate what you do. I would guess if you worked with Chris Haveli, hones a lot of dogs, I know that.
Chris Haveli is my go-to man to transport, he's the one who's taking them out here.
He does some good work.
He does, he definitely does.
So, you're just needing us to approve putting some air conditioners in there right now in place of that one?
Yeah, and, you know, I'm sure I can get, if there's some extra work that needs to be done to put them in, I'm sure we can get that done. I was hoping Mr. Fordr would be here tonight, because I, I know he had mentioned to me that there's some alarms or something that may have to be moved. And hopefully, you know, we could get somebody, Mr. Poe, maybe you can answer that as far as if there's something that does need to be moved, shuffled around or whatever.
They may have to, they have to change the wiring in order to put window air conditioners in, because they'll move the surface of the window up and the wiring is already preset, so they'll have to, they'll just have to redo that.
Okay, is that something that, can it be done fairly easily?
Uh, we'll have to get the alarm company to deal with that, but that, it can be done.
Okay, because like I said, you know, we're looking at 90 degree temperatures today, you know, it's something that we want to do sooner rather than later, and I have several people that's already offered to purchase units, you know, I've told them, they need to be 110, because I understand we don't have 220 capacity there, so 110 volt, and I've got the dimensions on what size that we need to get, and we can look at the BTUs. But we've got two, at least two, I think there was, from one animal control officer, probably, there's probably three windows, maybe, that we could utilize.
One, yeah, there's two, I think, together on that one end. I think there's two on that, on that west-facing wall. And then, but they talked about, today, I'm so there, and they talked about if they did that, they may put it on the east side, because the vent, the vent fan is on that west side and use the vent fan to pull the cool air.
Pull it across.
Across.
Yeah.
So, we'll have to look at that.
Okay. If I could, you know, I'd like to, like I said, just know, and we, let us start working on it as soon as, as soon as possible, because the fans, the fans are there now, but we know that's just, it's just circulating, the hot air really moving in around. If we can get something, do something a little bit more substantial.
Well, no, I mean, they'd be able to use the vent, I mean, the vent exhaust fan at times, but to cool area, they'll have to shut it down. Now, that's something else we'll have to check on, i-if we look at a permanent solution to that, if you're talking about air conditioning in that area, we'll have to check the state's, state vet's guidelines, because they have guidelines on construction and the air exchange and things like that. So, we'll have, we'll have to look at all that.
Yeah.
As to what type of system could accommodate something like that.
I did check just to see what, what, I know that Scott County Shelter has, Wise County, they have, of course, they have a larger facility, they have several heat pumps, you know, they've got an exchange system, a really good system. Dickinson County has, I don't know what kind of unit they have, but they have air conditioning in their kennel areas. So, you know, we know that, I mean, we know it can be done, and again, like I said, it may take us more time to figure out what a permanent solution would be, but if we can at least get the window units in and, and make them as comfortable as we can, you know, because it's not a death sentence for a dog to go to the shelter, you know, and we want those dogs to stay as healthy as they can, and, and we, the county has a lot of good dogs.
Who was it that saw the, somebody told me 112 degrees over there the other day? Who was it that saw the... Who was it that saw that?
I don't want to point fingers at anybody.
But you have it on good authority or is it under?
I have it on good authority, it was pretty hot back there.
They said today that, one of them said, a couple of days last week, it was over 100. Now, I was over there today and I sit back there, I didn't check the temperature, but it was under that. I mean, it wasn't unbearably hot.
Right, they had the fans going.
It's down a little bit and those fans, they said definitely weren't making a difference.
Yes, we got the fans going before that heated up too.
I'm guessing where we cut that timber, it catches more sun now in the evening?
Not really, that wasn't in an area where the sun, none of the timber around that area is good.
Okay. Well, when we tore down the extension office, the window air conditioners we took out of there, the ones that worked, we kept. And I don't know what the works program did with them, but they're not being used.
I'm not sure if Gary, if he even got those, I can check with him and see if they got one or two on site.
It was before they tore it down, when the works program went through and cleaned it out. I distinctly remember checking one of them that worked.
I'll check with him and see if they've got them.
Mr. Poe, do you have my number?
I do.
Okay.
You know, I'm gonna throw something out there, you know, I'm an animal lover myself. But I'll just, I'll kind of put my two cents worth in where we stand as humans. I've got a son that's deployed right now. You know what the temperature was today with his, didn't matter if he had the gear on or not, it was between 113 and 117. Do you think our country cares about keeping our soldiers cool?
I think our country, I think our people care, but it's our government that does it.
But that's just a comparison. I mean, it's said that we have humans running around with all their military gear on, all the equipment that they have to do, 113 up to 117. And that's, you know, and he's in Djibouti is where he's at.
It's unreal.
But, and you know, we sit here and talk about cooling the dog down. I guess you can kind of see where it kind of hits me kind of. And I'm an animal lover, like I say, I do love animals.
You know, but we can only deal with what we've got here. This is right here.
Well, yeah, we can and we can do more as people to make sure everybody else gets it.
Yeah, we can, if we just do the right thing.
I think sometimes we don't get our priorities in order.
We do have those old units.
We do need to vote on them?
No, I said, we do have those old units. I think there were two in the extension office.
Oh, okay.
And I don't think we need to run them all the time, but you know, I would take them up to 80 or under.
Yeah.
Yeah. I agree.
Is that something you think we can fix by the end of the week, at least on a temporary basis?
Should be able to.
You can come on up if you want to.
My name is Julie Estes and I live at 485 Park Henry Drive, Jonesville. And I am here out of concern for the shelter as well. I only found out yesterday of the situation and went by today to draw up a box fan to circulate the air. And when I learned that we did not have any air conditioning there and the temperatures that the room got to, I remembered that Virginia just recently passed an anti-tethering law for animals. And in that new law, it says that when the temperature is greater than 85 degrees outside or lower than 32 degrees, that an animal cannot be tethered. So in my opinion, because, I mean, basically they're tethered in place. They can't move, they can't run away, they can't find a breeze or a cool spot to lay. So if our shelters are exceeding 85 degrees, then I think that is certainly a problem. And not that it is in direct violation of this law, but I think certainly that it could be interpreted that way. When there are solutions, I think we certainly need to provide one for these animals. It's just cruel, I think. And we need a thermometer in there as well so that we know if we can get units on a temporary basis. And they don't need to be run all the time for it. But we do need to know when they need to be in operation. You know, I would hate to be stuck in a room and it be over 100 degrees and I don't have the ability to move and to leave the area. So we certainly appreciate any help that we could get and the permission to do so. I think people would be involved, would love to donate and get involved in this situation and be able to raise money for the shelter and provide them with a little bit better existence while they're under our care. Thank you.
Or we live for heating or nothing?
We've got heating, electric heating.
If you think about it, you know, a central unit would probably be more efficient all the way around because you're spending a lot of money with that electric, we all electric use. Whereas what does happen, it's pretty costly.
Okay, do we have anybody else for public expression? Okay, here it is, we'll move along. And I think two-year-old answer, I think everybody's willing to try to do whatever we can.
Yeah, I don't think you'll find anybody here disagree with you on that.
Just most of that stuff probably gonna have to go through Mr. Poe.
Sure, sure. Yeah, we just, you know, we just wanted to make sure that, you know, raise some awareness of the situation. Like I said, I know that you all have so much on your plate, every board supervisor does, everybody's in all that development and turn lanes and land routes. And you know, I mean, that's important, those things are very important to the community. And I know that animal care, the salt rank, that's so very high, so I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you all.
I agree with you that probably heat pump would be more efficient. And if you had a thermostat that's broken, it's hotter cold. And it probably would use much electricity than the heater than the wind air. Thank you all for coming.
Happy to.
Okay, next we got the approval of minutes. May 3rd, 2022 recess meeting. May 4th, 2022 recess meeting. May 17th, 2022 recess meeting. May 17th, 2022 regular meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion to approve the minutes, got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got the approval of refunds.
I think a motion that we approved the refund of $127.71 to Sheila Tricia Durham.
Okay, got a motion, got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we got county administrator reports of payroll warrants having been issued and approval of disbursements.
Motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Got a motion at second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, next we got finance supplemental appropriations.
Make a motion to approve supplemental appropriation for Department of Social Services in amount of $24,000. Also, service code in amount of $300 and service corp clerk in amount of $2,040.
Okay, brings the total to 26,340, 26,340 dollars. Got a motion, got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got board appointments. First we got economic development authority.
Nominate Rick Spring.
Okay, got a motion to appoint Rick Spring, we got a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got the Mountain Empire Community College.
Chairman, you've got a couple of letters from the college on those. Gail Elliott, of the three appointees, Gail Elliott is one of those. She is ineligible for reappointment because she's already served two full terms and their bylaws prohibit more than that. Elwond Hillion has served one term, but she has requested due to other obligations that she not be reappointed.
Make a motion, we take the first two, Gail Elliott and Elwond Hillion. Next, we reappoint Garrett, did we?
I said, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got the Lonsdale Pine Office on the U.
Have we not voted on leaving before?
You did, but their terms, by the time we got around to getting them appointed, most of the year was gone. So their appointment terms, these used to expire in September, but now I think they expire at the end of June.
Okay, I'll make a motion to reappoint Abigail Vare and Brooke Chat.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next Board of Zoning Appeals.
Mr. Chairman, why do we, Board of appointments, I just want to state for the record, late last week, I did get a letter of resignation from one of the members of the airport authority, Mr. Charles Culverson, who has served on the old airport commission and the county airport authority and advisory committee that was formed when the airport was first built. Since probably about the mid-'70s, maybe a little earlier, he's served 40-plus years, 45 plus in O.P., probably so. But anyway, he just, he reached a point that he feels like that he can't be effective anymore, so. That'll be for future consideration, I guess.
Well, I don't have anybody, I don't have anything showing here for the zoning.
Zoning.
I don't know. Shows for July.
Yeah. Something any great?
But as far as airport authority goes, I talked to Charlie and he has a hard time hearing. But he recommended to me that somebody to fill his place on that board that was instrumental in getting that airport in there in the first place, and that's Manny Gilman. And at this time, I make a motion to appoint Manny to that authority.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is that zoning appeal a mistake?
No, all of those, those are for July. The airport authority there is Cody Walker, that's not Charlie. I was just stating while you were on.
On the agenda, it shows the zoning appeals coming up.
Oh, that's my big thing.
Wow, be admitted. Y'all heard that, did you get that for the record? I know you did.
You don't hear that every day. In the office, you'll hear it.
We know. Okay, hospital authority appointments update.
I've got a letter in there from the hospital authority chairman. There's some discussion back and forth, I think, between two boards that Ms. Westover wanted to continue serving. So that letter basically advises that since they've been downsized from 11 to seven members, the four members who were eliminated, Ms. Westover was one of those. But they're requesting that she would like to continue to serve and that they would request you consider her for an appointment in 2023 when the next two appointments expire. Or at least one, I'm not sure how many have expired in 2023. Those were stated returns, so.
So we just need to vote to take the size down from 11 to seven?
Well, you've already done that effectively in the eliminating that. You did that about two or three months ago. The hospital authority, though, the four that were coming up, they concurred in downsizing to the seven. The question was, there was a comment made that some, I don't remember who made it, that they thought Dr. Westover was not necessarily wanting to come off the board, but she would not care to continue to serve. But since she's already, since her term had already expired and no one else stepped aside, they're just saying, consider her for appointment again in 2023 when someone else's term expires. I don't think you'll have a problem finding members of that board who are willing to come off when their time is up because I mean, they've basically got war out there in the process of trying to get themselves back open, so.
I hope some of their committee members did too.
Yeah.
So she just, basically they're willing just to consider her, what is the next appointment?
Yes, keep her in mind. And I think all those appointments terms are up in April because that's when the authority, I believe, was formed. So the next potential opportunity to appoint her would be probably in April of '23.
Okay, so we don't need to take any action on that?
No.
Okay, next we got redevelopment housing authority board request for additional compensation.
You have a letter in your packet from the executive director, the new executive director, on behalf of the authority board members requesting that you consider providing additional compensation to the housing commissioners for additional meetings that were held in March of 2022. They met three times that month in addition to their regular board meeting. And those were all involved with interviewing, either preparing or interviewing for new executive director candidates. I understand maybe on a couple of those days, the meetings, and then all days and with the conversation of interviewing candidates. So they're just asking for extra consideration if you would consider that, for extra compensation scheme.
What do they usually get per month?
$50.
They have one meeting per month?
Yes.
So they had three plus the regular?
Yes. That's unusual for them to meet more than once a month. Some of the other boards do occasionally have a recess meeting, PSA, occasionally the EDA if they're dealing with a prospect or something, but it is right. And what we've done with some of the others, if I If a, if a member of that board misses a regular meeting and they do have a recess recall meeting during that month, if they attend at least one of those meetings, then they get, they'd be paid. Uh, but if they miss the regular meeting, typically they don't get paid, so...
And you said they had three additional meetings? Is that what you said?
Yes, and I say it, they were rather lengthy because they were doing the interviews.
Yeah, only hours, what, the meetings gotten earlier?
They last, they, those interviews extend out quite, quite a bit of time.
How would y'all feel about an extra hundred fifty dollars, fifty dollars for me?
I mean, sounds good to me.
I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? How much we? Probably after me. Let's go back, let's go back out there. We need that for Tuesday. And Thursday, Sunday. Yeah. Okay. Next we got proposed memorandum of motion standing with Department of Social Services.
You have a post in your packet, a proposed memorandum of understanding with D.S.S., which outlines the responsibilities of each party with respect to building and rental payments to be paid by D.S.S. to the county. We've had a lease agreement, uh, since shortly after they moved into the building, but within the last few years, the State Department of Social Services has insisted, insisted that they can't operate under a lease agreement. It needs to be a memorandum of understanding. Don't ask me why the difference, but that's their call and their guideline. Uh, they're stating that they may not be able to pay rental payments if they don't have it in the form of a memorandum. Uh, the memorandum states basically, we started out with a document that was so confusing, I just sent it back to them, telling them, let's clean this up and we'll consider it. And they came back, I think two or three different ones have taken a stab at it. And this pretty much mirrors the exact same thing that we got in our lease agreement, and it's very short. The first one was probably three times as long or longer. So it, it just covers the basics, which is the county's responsible for major repairs to the building, any of the, uh, equipment or anything, plumbing, uh, H.V.A., anything like that. And they're responsible for, uh, utilities and for janitorial services.
So, just out of curiosity, if they might not be able to make the payments, you know, without, or the, I mean, where they go do their business, try, if they don't have that?
That's just, uh, talking, I guess.
They were going to?
They, they were defacing in the cost allocation plan, that's where they were headed, saying.
Yeah, of course, you know, I'm on the D.S.S. board. They were going to withhold two hundred seventy thousand dollars worth of money if we didn't meet the deadline by getting this by June thirty?
Yeah, that's what they wanted. They kept tightening down.
They were serious. They, they apparently have been trying for a long time to get this done under the old director.
Well, they've been talking about it, and again, what they sent me, when I actually sat down and looked through it, I sent back, I said, start with something that, that applies to Lee County. Don't send me something that actually has Patrick County written on the documents and has financial information about Patrick County's building. Crack me something that covers Lee County, we'll discuss.
So is that something, uh?
But there's potential.
Legal terms, that's the reason they want that? I mean, it makes no sense to me whatsoever.
There's potential through the cost allocation plan that we make it a little more than what we're receiving right now. There's potential. I won't say that we will, but that's one of the arguments that they've made. But it just, it's their standard that they have memorandums of understandings and not the lease agreements.
What's the reason the rent, it says the rent should be thirty-four, thirty-nine a month, is that rent thirty-two something?
Yes, it's been killed a little bit. We basically cracked it originally so that it would cover our, uh, bond payments every year. That, that was the whole purpose in trying to recoup the bond payments. And we will do that over time. We'll still recoup that. It, it may run a little bit beyond the twenty thirty-six on this, the date. This agreement's scheduled to expire in twenty thirty-six, but there's also a provision that it will, unless the two parties do not agree, it will auto-renew on a year-to-year basis from that time forward. And actually, we have refinanced from that original, and we're actually, we've trimmed our cost in that somewhat through that refinance.
So we are supposed to be getting thirty-four hundred dollars a month?
Well, they didn't get on track immediately, uh, and I'm not sure if we, if when the timing on this started, if they actually got moved into the building in time, so it may have been delayed a year, but it's close.
I make a motion. Will you approve the proposed memorandum of understanding with the Department of Social Services? Okay, got a motion. That's second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm staying.
Well, you could vote on it, you didn't even know what it was.
We talked about it in Austin, in their meeting.
Uh, just joking.
You know, I'm staying there too.
Proposals for operations should run conventions.
I request to discuss those in closed session.
Okay, I guess we can skip on down to, uh, reports and recommendations of the county administrator.
Uh, the only other thing I have, uh, request, uh, for closed session as well, are personnel and also acquisition of property.
Okay. Okay, how about reports and recommendations of the board?
First, I did some legal research the other day, ran across a code section dealing with, uh... If there's a DUI and there's a result, that, uh, there was a wreck that results from a DUI, or manslaughter, or it could be underage, uh, person drinking that causes a wreck. There's a whole bunch of code sections that apply, but if the or, if the county has an ordinance that says that you have a wreck based on one of those code sections and fire, uh, fire department or EMTs have to come out as part of your court costs, you can have to pay them for coming out there. I thought that might be a way for us to get some more money for the fire departments. But you've got to pass the ordinance to do that. You can get up to three hundred, you can either keep up with your time on scene or you can have a flat fee not to exceed two hundred fifty dollars. It can apply to the sheriff's office, the rescue squad, they have to be volunteer rescue unit in the fire department. So I don't know if really the rescue squads would apply here, if we consider ours volunteer now or they're not volunteer. I don't, I guess that's a question for somebody else, but I thought we should give that a little thought, look at that code section and... Maybe try to get some money in for fire people at least.
So is that up to that amount per department, or is that?
You can get three fifty for the sheriff's office, three fifty for rescue squad, three fifty for fire department. If they all three come, I mean, usually they are all three going to come. Now, I wouldn't propose to make it that high, uh, but, you know, a hundred fifty, two hundred, two hundred fifty, I think would be reasonable. Uh, and it can also be based on reckless driving. If your reckless driving causes an accident, those people come out, any one of them can get that on, tack it on the cost.
So where does that come up from?
The person that causes the wreck pays. As part of their, it's considered restitution, not a fine. But we would have to advertise for it to do that. I don't care if we do it now or do it some other time. Just want to bring to your attention what you think about it. Would y'all want to advertise for that or get some thought?
Whatever.
You all right there?
All right, you said your board?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a fifteen point two dash seventeen sixty. I guess you need to probably put the amount in the advertising.
It'll have to be stated in the ordinance.
I, I, you know, I don't want to make it hard on people that get in legal trouble. They've already got court costs and they had to pay their court-appointed attorney's fees if they have one. But it's worth something. Is it worth, what is that, ten fifty, three fifty on each one? You know, I, I don't know, but I thought two hundred fifty dollars on each one was a considerable figure.
Was, uh... Fire and rescue the only ones that it stated if it was volunteer only?
Yes.
Okay.
As I recall.
Because I thought law enforcement can't be volunteer, they have to be paid regardless of, of that.
So I, I would make the motion to advertise for it at a fee not to exceed two hundred fifty dollars per occurrence per apartment.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm sure we've all had a lot of inquiries about the landfill. I know there's probably some that we don't want to go into openly, but I was wondering if Mr. Pope could kind of give a little bit of an update for the public's benefit on where we are with the landfill situation.
Uh... I've had some contact with the city of Bristol, and they not, they still not officially know the status of anything. I mean, we have, we have a contract with them, uh, that runs through April thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. And, uh, tried to contact the city manager, unknown, not knowing that he was out due to an injury and wasn't at work. But then I talked, I did contact the solid waste director. He said that they were looking at all of that and that they would be back in contact with us if I had any questions. In the meantime, he gave me his cell number and told me to call. Uh, the reports kept coming out. Everything was a little bit unclear in what they, in, in, uh, D.E.Q.'s letter to them stated that they were to stop accepting commercial slash industrial waste and were not sure if they were classifying, uh, county waste, our waste as commercial, certainly not industrial. Uh, then there was, uh, some articles that came out a week or so after that, a couple of weeks after that, where the city of Bristol, Tennessee was making comments that they were going to close it. So yet, city of Bristol wasn't saying that they were going to close. They were just saying they would comply with the D.E.Q. requirements. Uh, and there were some other requirements within that as well, as far as banning it and trying to get the overs down. Uh, then there was a, a comment that the two had agreed, and there was some comments, or at least some... Some statements that were attributed to the city of Bristol, Virginia, that said, maybe they're going to close the facility. So we sent another email, uh, last week to the solid waste director. I did not get a response until sometime this afternoon. Uh, he got back to me. He's actually on vacation. But he said that they're tentative, I guess tentatively at this point, they, they will be shutting down in September. He did not give a date. Uh, because what I was saying to them was, you know, if they're going to close, they have got, if they're going to, if they're going to, to, uh, send us a notice indicating that our contract is going to be canceled, uh, they'll no longer accept the waste, then we've got to have time to advertise. So again, I just got that this afternoon, so I, I'm, I was going to go ahead and start, uh, tweaking the previous, uh, uh, bid specs that we put out, or proposals that we put out for, uh, disposal, which, uh... The last one we put out was in twenty fourteen, so I'll probably have to update it a little bit as far as tonnes and things like that. But there are two other facilities in the region, and I, um, I think either one probably will, or both will bid on it. Uh, I just don't know what the pricing is going to be at this point.
Is there any, uh, anything in the, in the contract that we have with them now that, uh, that states that they need to give us if they're going to shut it down or something, any type of timeframe?
He alluded to that. I, I, when I did a, I gave you all a copy of that agreement, and I just, I scanned through it real quick, not, not even landing on every paragraph, and I didn't actually see anything right, that stood out. But it may be there. I'll go back and look at it. Uh, but, but again, uh, an action like this where D.E.Q. is, is the driver behind it, I don't know that we have any recourse, anything other than to go out.
That was specifically addressing the contract. I read it. I, I kind of skimmed it like you, but I saw that form part that talked about if the government wants to shut it down, that we're going to contract.
Yeah.
I didn't see that.
And again, they're giving them ninety days. I, what, what part of my inquiry to them was, what, what's the trigger date for the ninety days? You know, where are we at? And like I said, he came back today and just indicated that, you know, they're looking at September, but he just, he didn't say what time on September, so...
Oh, that's.
We've got time, uh, if, if we can get, uh, if we can get something on the street advertised within the next two weeks, that'd give us sufficient time to start getting something in place. Our holler will still be, uh, I, I think, uh, if their pricing originally back in fourteen, either of these two locations are going to be about, well, one of them's going to be a little bit closer.
Is their contract tied to a specific points, though?
No, well, uh... I don't think so. I'll look at it, but I don't think that'd be a hard negotiation.
I'll make the motion that we go ahead and advertise for the Tipping, uh, location.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
At the last fly-in, there was a electrical issue down at the, uh... At the airport, uh... Of course, we, I think, probably going to have in the budget that they get so much money, but regardless of whether it's our money or their money, I think somebody needs to look at the electrical issue. Were you aware of that, Danny?
I don't like to say the word to me.
So the food trucks, there were three food trucks, and they were constantly throwing the breaker.
So they were plugged into air pack. They didn't run on generators? Well, there's a problem. You're pulling commercial kitchen equipment off of a system, off of the electrical that was designed to run what's inside the building, not to run outside commercial equipment. And I know from having a piece or two of commercial equipment, kitchen equipment, uh, it, it pulls a lot of power. You've got to watch how you blow that out.
My suggestion was, we need to have, then they had cords everywhere because, you know, there's no outside outlets. They didn't find them.
Well, we don't have because we have no need for that typically. Uh... Most food trucks have onboard generators that they use when they go to remote locations because they don't have places to plug that.
My suggestion would be that we have electrician look at what it would take to put an outside outlet on the east side of the building to accommodate when you're having some kind of event happen like that.
If you're going to be pulling more than one truck, you'd have to do separate outlets for each one.
I'm not asking to do it. I'm just saying, could we?
I checked with electrician and getting, getting to check what's there and see what, what is, it's capable of doing. He can have, he can have breakers, uh, and then run the wiring to do that. But again, like I said, most of the time, the food, the food vendors are, are equipped to run their own equipment, you know, on their own power.
You know, it's a good idea, though. I think personally, you know, it's a great place to have some type of, you know, event down there to make it accessible for the food truck, if anybody else, I think, power, additional power for whatever the case is there for.
We, uh... Then how long has this proposed zoning map been active? If you call the zoning administrator and ask about what's something that's zoned, I dealt with this recently for a client last week. They tell you about how it's zoned and then what the proposed zone, that's something that comes up a lot. And, and there was something I read in the packet here that talked about proposed zoning. People, the question people always ask is, well, when's it going to get passed? When is the proposed zoning going, going to go through? I don't know what the answer is to that, but this has been hanging out there for years. What, how long has that been hanging out there? What's it going to take to get these proposals off the table or voted on?
The initial proposed changes started back in about two thousand and ten, but never got completed because they wouldn't stay on. Uh... I pushed for that, uh, well, I, I tried to get it started, uh... After Mr. James left, to get it back up. And that was two directors that worked on it then. Uh... I started pushing it to them and actually, uh... Trying to think of the timeline on how that worked, whether that was before Aaron or after, whether I had him get it started and then I... whether that was before Aaron or after, whether I had him get it started and then I tried to push them on through to completion. Then we got into the pandemic because one of the things we knew we needed to do once they got all the changes made, or the proposed changes on the mapping, on our mapping system, would be to take those out to the public in the communities, you know, at least have, at least a meeting in every district so that people could see them up close just for their district to get an idea of what was being proposed. At the same time, we also cleaned up a lot of older issues, finding things that had been done that hadn't been put on the map. Now, that's been done, but then the mapping side was a little bit, we've been a little bit slow in how to get that work all to them, verify what was done. And it's being handed back and forth between directors and me and back to whoever the new director is. And so there's a little bit of timeline there, but then the mapping side has been a delay since Mr. Page left because he was doing most of the mapping.
So is, right now, is there some confusion about some places as what zoning are? Because I understand.
Should not be, now, on, from the, from some things that were done back in about two thousand and ten, they proposed, the only thing they really proposed back then was adding a village commercials zone along the fifty eighth quarter, primarily most of the way from Coming Out all the way to Jonesville. But that was never implemented. And the previous mapping technician went ahead and put that on there. If you pull the zoning up, that pops up with the zoning. All you've got to do is go down to your drop downs and click on it or expand it so that you see each individual zone and just unclick that proposed DC zone. And now you've got accurate zoning. And the changes that we found, all the changes that had not been mapped up to at least, I'd say, two years ago, three years ago, those were incorporated into the maps and adjusted. If there's been any re-zoning since that time, they may not be reflected on there. But that's how you get rid of that proposed, the new, the newly proposed changes have not been mapped yet, so they won't pop up. It's just that old, it's a blue zone on both sides of fifty eight, roughly, not a continuous segment, but roughly from Coming Out to Jonesville. But all you've got to do is click that one box and you get rid of that off the map and then you can see the actual zoning.
So to get the proposed stuff passed, we need to have community meetings in each district, go over and have a public hearing and then the zoning administration votes on it?
Planning commission will vote on it and then it becomes the board of supervisors to finally.
Can you, can you bring that to a head?
I can finish it, but again, we need to map it, we've got to be able to map it.
Well, is somebody working on that?
I'm not sure, I know they're working on another project, the commissioner's office and planning is working on another document. I'm not sure what all their training to get done.
Or close on it.
Okay, but now, I'll have to, I'll have to check with the existing person they own on the mapping side, how much and how fast we can get it accomplished.
Even if it was just one district at a time, just to make some progress?
Well, that was originally what was supposed to propose at one of our meetings that we're going, you know, get it finalized one district.
Well, we were going to put it out in two districts, in each individual district. The plan was still to bring it back and adopt it all.
Right. But yeah, I mean, but the discussion was to get it done, not, you know, not to let it go on and, you know, year after year after year.
Over at the airport, because I understand that it hasn't been, or not the airport, the landfill hasn't been bush hogged. A few employees have suggested to me, employees over there, that we just allow somebody to cut that for hay to mark the two or three wells over there, trim around them, let somebody cut the rest in for hay. The ones that I've talked to say they're shorthanded anyway.
They are.
It would save them some time. I don't see any harm in it, what are your thoughts about that?
We used to cut it hay.
We've done that in the past, some years it was worth more to cut than it was others, but in some years we were doing work during summer season on the sinks and stuff like that, but we couldn't do that.
So do you bid it out, do you just allow whoever to cut it or what do you do?
I was trying to think, the last time we did that, I think they just had someone to offer to cut it, just clear it.
How much hay do you go for a guy? What is it, thirteen acres?
Not the best in the world, but I mean, some of it's pretty good, some of it's not so good. Some of it's being replaced, but most of it's got proved to be better.
I almost think you'd have to try to bid it out or something, give everybody a shot at it.
I'd be fine with that.
Needs to be done.
Probably going to be a late, be a little late for a first cut, I want to give, maybe just give seven.
Cut done, approved. I've got a neighbor that's got hay down first time right now.
But at the same time, if you bid it out there, things could.
I'm not sure there's, I think it's probably a good idea to do this as a matter of looking above board, but I don't know that you had to go through any two week, four week procurement.
In this case, it's as, it's worth as much to us just to get it cleared because normally we would have paid because that helps, that helps the trash growth on the facility itself. Because the ground, not that, it's poor ground to start with, and so that helps it to get it cut, keep it cut back.
With deal prices and everything, I guess if it's just going to be stuff right there pretty close, it's going to be rapid anyway.
What about putting it on Facebook for five or six, seven days to make a proposal, let Mr. Poe handle it? I'll make that a motion and we just put it on Facebook for five to seven days.
Got a motion in second, all in favor? Any vote?
I brought up to Mr. Poe that on these road sign changes or road name changes, what are our cost in it versus what are we charging them to do it? The cost that it's taken for us to get a new sign, get somebody to put the sign up, advertise for it, costs more than what we charge them. And if they want it done, I feel like they should at least have to pay what it costs us to do it. So I think Mr. Poe figured it at a hundred twenty five dollars and we're charging a hundred dollars.
It's roughly that, yeah, but the hundred dollar fee was set when the ordinance was reasonably adopted. Of course, there was a two-year warranty, they don't change anything. And since that time, price of sign blade has gone up. Post, or there, you can reuse the post when you change the name, but you have to put a new sign blade.
So your figure of a hundred twenty five was just for the advertising for the sign or for the blade itself? They didn't even, they didn't include anybody's labor in doing it?
No, that was the cost, most of what he charges, he just caused maintenance, sign maintenance. That usually just means replacing blades and he charged about thirty five bucks on that. And then, one thing I'd tell you on the, on the advertisement, it's about sixty.
Whatever it was, it added up to a hundred twenty five.
Yeah, about a hundred twenty five bucks, right.
What would y'all think about raising it to one twenty five, one fifty?
Do you want to take, you need to pay or?
Well, that's the way I feel, I just bought a place and I'm the only one now on that road and it'll be the same thing it is now, because to me it's just, what's the big deal? But this is me, I make the motion that we raise it to a hundred fifty dollars.
Well, that's included in the ordinance, the costs are not separate, so it'll have to be in ordinance.
Well, make the motion that we advertise that in the ordinance.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any vote?
The airport, we had talked about when we cut the airport to start doing that annually so it didn't get in that shape again. I kind of feel like we should advertise that for somebody to come in in spring and leave fall. What are your thoughts on that?
I think we already have that in the ordinance.
No, that was clear, he's talking about spraying. We don't have a lot of vegetative ground, I'm not so sure that we wouldn't be better served to wait until spring and catch it when the new leaves come out and spray it then.
I agree with that. That'll also get most of it.
There's still quite a bit of debris from the original cut that's holding down a lot of the under ground, so it may have more effect when it's got the fresh growth in the springtime to spray that.
You put that on your calendar to remind us?
I do.
The last thing I had was litter coordinator, website, Facebook page, phone number, and the corporate board downstairs, it still says the litter coordinator is down the hall.
Yeah, well.
Have we switched over the phone number so when you call litter coordinator it rings down?
It was called in, I'm assuming it got completed, to my knowledge.
You checked on that?
I will.
And the Facebook page, is all that, and the website, is all that converted over?
Well, I don't think our webpage has been adjusted. Again, personally handling that has been given a new job, so, but we'll get that squared up.
That's all I have.
Kevin, time. Yeah, we talked about getting back to litter, fought back about adopting the highway. And of course, we lost our litter coordinator. So I would suggest that we get involved in that again. And another thing I also noticed, over in Scott County, they've got wheelboards that keeps Scott County clean. I think that's a good idea too.
What do you have to do on the adopted highways, that VDOT thing?
How does that system work?
If it's a doctor highway, it goes through VDOT, it has to work through them. They've got a section on their website with the details on that, we'll set to pull that up and see exactly how.
Actually, I saw, I saw a road the other day that had one on the doctor highway site done.
There's still some old ones out there that.
Well, I think these people were picking up trash, I mean, that was a good program.
We'd have to wait till they get the weeds cut before they're picking up trash.
Well, they are mowing in county now.
Oh, yeah, I've seen that.
Yeah, that actually makes me, I mean, you go east, everything's cut, looks like, you know, mowed hay field or something. You get down here in the Bristol district and it looks like crap. People calling me complaining they can't pull out because they can't see if there's anything coming or not.
Same here, I get the calls too. That's all I have, Mr. Trump, you got anything?
I got one thing for now and then one thing for closed session, but what do we do about getting an ordinance passed to, I guess, to keep from getting any more clinics in here? In the counties, lost on planes, whatever the case, whatever they got.
I think that becomes a legal question based on some of the argument that was made on ADA, whether or not you can block that.
I think there was two things at stake, one was ADA, of course, it's federal stuff. Then the issue was, if you allow this by special use permit and something applies over the existing zoning scheme that you had, then you can't deny it because you just don't like it. If you don't like it, then you just write it out of your, out of your zoning scheme to start with.
Well, you know, we had that, well, the last group were here, their attorney, first, the first statement he made is that we voted as a board to stop drugs from coming in here, you know, to do whatever we, you know, and that lawsuit is to stop drugs from coming in here. But how is that stopping it if we keep allowing them to come in here and bring more drugs in? You're just bringing one drug for another drug, so you're still bringing drugs in. So his comment made no sense at all, I mean, it was just very conflicting in my, in my view, but.
I think you just basically take it out of the allowed use, I mean, now you have special uses, you've got your allowed uses and then your things that are allowed by special use permit, you just take it out.
So what do, what do we do, need to do to?
You have to have a public hearing, it's amending your ordinance, it's the same process as adding a new use. Just have, you have a public hearing to propose removing that as an allowed use by special use permit. Goes through the same process, it would start with the planning commission as a public hearing.
So. You go ahead, go ahead.
So do we recommend to them that we would like?
You can recommend to them to consider that.
So we don't need to make a motion on it or anything?
No, yeah, I mean, you can make a motion to send it to.
Well, I would make that motion. Second. Got a motion that's second, all in favor? Any vote? That one of our DD, I think it's out of business now. Well, but.
I'm not sure they have any of her open, I don't think.
I've never saw more than two cars.
I don't think they do.
I don't know if you've got any calls on it or not, but I, even I've addressed them, I've got both of them called. People are just concerned, you know, so, but that's all I got, thank you.
I make a motion, go into closed session pursuant to two point two fish, thirty seven eleven sub eight, one personnel, three acquisition of realty or disposition of realty, twenty nine contracts.
First thing.
What did I say?
That's one, that's one, he said one.
Oh, I made, I said first, but I, I said one, but I made.
He said one. I just dropped it on my head, that's all right.
Got a vote, you got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote?